I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone would stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to thank you all for coming this evening. This is our second annual State of the District meeting. It's a new format. And we did quite a bit of outreach in the communities, through the schools, through the newspaper, through different organizations. I see better turnout this year than we did in the years past, but I think it's still something that we can work on. I had a couple of things I wanted to comment on, partly in that vein. And so I'll get to my point, but it might take me a minute. I quickly wanted to congratulate all of our athletes throughout the district in winter sports, particularly the boys' basketball, RC basketball team. As far as they went in the tournament, that was just a great representation of our school and our community. It was also a fun night out for myself and my wife and my youngest son to go to Portland and participate in at least one of those games. So generally, I just wanted to say, the team really made us proud, and not necessarily because of how they played, but because of how they represented themselves. And Coach in particular. And I could say that across the board for many of our coaches in the district. I'm just really proud. And I want to say that about our administration. I know that you guys, you know, taking a night out to be here tonight, you've spent a lot of time preparing materials for this evening. We ask an awful lot of you as it is. And I can say to a name, I'm just really proud of you guys and feel fortunate to work with you. After participating, this year was the first year that I've done all of the boardwalks. And you all have such unique styles. You all run your departments or your schools in very different ways. And if I had 20 minutes, I would love to go down through each one of you and comment on the work that you do. But in general, there are two characteristics that run the game. And that is professionalism and integrity. And I just, part of what keeps me doing this, and part of what keeps me speaking highly about our district is the work that you guys do in your school. So I just want to stand and thank our administration. So thanks very much. I don't do it enough. We will move on to item 4.0. Approve and amend the minutes of January 27th. And February 11th, we'll start with the January 27th minutes. Is there a motion? A motion to approve from Steve, seconded by Dave. Okay, any changes, any additions?
I was just wondering, is Senator Robin present?
I didn't pick up on that. Robin, I don't think was present. So we need to make that change. All right, Jennifer? Especially in a couple of places where we welcomed you, within a lot of circumstances you've not been there. Any other changes to the minutes from the 27th? Okay, so there's a motion to approve with one change. All those in favor, raise your hand. Votes, none, those pass. Okay, we'll take a look at the minutes from the meeting from February 11th. Is there a motion? Double approval. Now I move to approve, seconded by Bill. Any changes or needs? Okay. There's a motion to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, none of the votes. Those pass. Adjustments to the agenda, item 5.0. Do we have any adjustments?
We just have one field question.
Okay. We saw some other ones, so we'll make it 11.4. Okay, and we should probably also add item 8.4, West Bath with parole committee report. Since that group has met, I know Kyle was present. If you'd be willing to call it a man call. Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Item 6.0, public comment. David?
If you could just move to the mic just for the TV purposes. David has something for us to add. I have a couple of questions for the Board of Directors. Have you thought about revisiting the way RSU One receives a state subsidy to communities instead of as a unit as a whole?
I don't think it's come up.
No discussion passed that?
You know, the meeting that we had last week or the week before, I mean, the district will put something out soon from, you know, from the district's point of view, some of the questions that were asked about the subsidy coming to the district versus coming to the communities. So we will have some correspondence and try to clarify some of the questions that were asked.
If I recall correctly, that was one of the trade-offs when RSU One was formed. RSU One would take on the loans that certain communities had, and in turn, the state subsidy would come to the RSU One as a unit. If that does not happen, would there be a discussion as far as returning those loans to those communities?
Again, I think we should, we will be able to clarify that question that keeps coming up about subsidy coming back to individual communities versus coming back to RSU.
Okay.
Very soon.
As far as the election of the Board of Directors, is there any discussion on returning the election? So if you're from West Bath, Pittsburgh, or whatever, if you're elected in that community, you represent just one community and not two, as there appears to be ample conflict of interest at times. So you're elected as one town or one community only, not representing two communities?
That has come up recently in discussion, and it's something that we may explore in the future. You're not the only individual that's brought it up. The only thing that, it would require a change to the legislation. And the other thing that, you know, some folks from some other communities have expressed that there does appear to be a conflict of interest. You're not necessarily representing one community over the other. And they feel that they would like to have, you know, their community represented solely by one representative. The trade-off to that is, one of the things you would have to look at would be a weighted vote system or a weighted representation system. So then there isn't the opportunity for equal representation across the communities. It may get heavily weighted towards one community over another community. But I think it is something that we're going to explore in the future, set up a subcommittee to take a look at it and look at some alternatives and at least have that discussion.
Do you have any timeframe for that?
No.
Next year, two years?
No, I would say something might get set up before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'll turn it over to Patrick for staff reports. And we have one, but it's a good one.
I'll just make some opening remarks, and then I'll have Dean set up the projector and we'll go on from there. So as a school system, we try to do the best we can to anticipate the future and move forward in a planned yet feasible way. We set our sights on important goals to improve student achievement and growth. Knowing full well that the world that our students will inherit will pose unique challenges and opportunities. The students that came in this year to pre-K, 121 students. Hopefully, next year, it'll be more like 145, 150 students. But this year's pre-K will graduate from high school in 2027. If they pursue college, they'll finish their college degree in the early 2030s. And then their work lives will likely extend well into the 2070s. What kind of education should we provide to our children and our youth? What level of investment should we seek from our public? And what should our students really know and be able to do? Those are the types of questions that we in RSU One, as well as other local communities, state level, you know, national level, really struggle with. And it's just, it's an ongoing challenge for us, and I think it's a very positive challenge. Tonight, the State of the District is a presentation by our administrative team that is intended to provide the Board, but also the public, with pertinent information about what's going on now in RSU One. Tonight, you'll hear about academic, extracurricular programming, community involvement, strengths of the system, at the same time, areas of concern, areas of need, and facilities, to name a few areas. I'd like to thank you for those of you that came out tonight. And by tomorrow, at the end of the day, this presentation will be on the district website, so if you'd like to refer back to it. Before we begin tonight, I'm just going to make a few opening comments and then turn it over to our administrators. But what I thought might be, as Dean is kind of setting this up, is just to have each of our administrators that are mostly in the first two rows here, two to three rows, if you wouldn't mind just, you know, just going through, standing up and just saying your name and your title in the system. Just because, you know, there's people here, we have some new people this year, I thought would be an efficient use of our time early on, so when you come up to the mic, you don't have to introduce yourself again. So Dean, do you want to?
Dean Anderson, Technology Director, District. Hudson Low, which will not be true. Conso, Principal of Orange. Joe Oss, who's Director of the Career Tech Center. Jay Mink, the ten principal of West High School.
Emily Thompson, who's the West Bath. Sandra Lawrence, who's come working with us at Pittsburgh, Illinois. Carrie Math, who's the one that she was. Sharon Brown, Director of Special Services. Kimberly, Director of Middle Education.
Scott Walker, Administrator, West High. Ross Burke, which is the both of that middle of West High.
Thank you, guys. I will just remind you guys, if you could stay as close as you can to this, just so that the video will come out clear. So, Dean, go ahead. So before I turn it over to the individual schools and centers, I would, I just want to make a few comments, opening comments, and just give you a couple of, some informational slides to put things into perspective. First off, just our mission. We are not going to read all the slides tonight. We're just going to go through these fairly quickly. But I do think this is one that I will read to support and challenge students to develop and apply the skills, knowledge, and character to be responsible and productive learners, citizens, and leaders in a global society. Students served 21, 2150 is what we have, and that's remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years since I've arrived. You can see the schools that we have there and the population. And I think maybe pre-K is involved in Dyke Newell, but it may not be in another school. But 2150 is the approximate population that we have, pre-K through 12. For staff, 318 total. I broke down the teaching staff, just as an informational item for you, to let you know what degree levels that people have. Ed Tex, 57. If you see other, that really is central office staff, as well as technology department, and then food service. And then this may be hard for you to see, but if you want to refer to it, you know, if you have an interest. But this is 2013 expenditures and the percent that we, where we spend our money. And just to point out to you, our FY13 budget, I didn't put it on this line, I apologize, was around $26 million. And you can see FY14 is 27.7 at the bottom. But the three biggest areas where we spend the greatest percentage of our money is regular instruction, which obviously is our, most of our teaching staff, as well as supplies and equipment that may be in there. Special education instruction follows next, at about close to 16%. And that is mostly special ed staff, but it also can include tuition as well. And then the third one that I'll highlight is just our facilities and maintenance, which is almost, it's 11.5%. So just to give you some idea, for those of you that are on Finance Committee or anybody a member of the public, if you come to our Finance Committee meetings, this will be, you know, kind of focused on in more depth over the next couple of weeks. So at this point, I would turn it over to our elementary principals.
Good evening. I have the privilege of being able to share with you some of the highlights of our elementary schools. And while our schools are all extremely diverse, our presentation about the highlights of our schools is focused on some of our commonalities. So our first commonality, set of commonalities falls under the category of strong instructional practices. And we really want to emphasize we have a focus on student-centered instruction and the growth mindset. Under that, you'll see in all of our schools, as you saw during your boardwalks, that we have a continued focused use of rigorous learning targets. And we also have fully embraced the mini observation process to provide regular and specific feedback. Some of that feedback is focused on those learning targets and how to make sure your instruction is properly aligned with those targets. We have many different sources of data in the district, but we have a common use of the NWEAs. We give it universally in grades 2 through 8 in the district. And then in two schools, we also use it at kindergarten and first grade, at Dyke Newell and West Bath, while Woolwich and Pittsburgh are considering that use in the future. With that data, we focus on goal-setting with students, and we provide opportunities for them to reflect on their progress. We also have some common research-based practices. This year, for the first time, we have a universal implementation of Lucy Cockens' writing program in all of our schools K-5. We have, with Lucy Cockens, have focused on making sure that all of teachers and students are using the narrative units. So we're really focused on that narrative process to begin with. We also have piloted spelling connections at all schools, at all grade levels. And this is something that in the past, all the schools have been doing a variety of different programs. Some accuse Sitten as their main source, but this is the first year we have a common spelling program across the district. We also have different ways in which we are collaborating to discuss student progress and planning for interventions. We're using regular database meetings for that collaboration. We also see in all of our schools a focus on close reading, which is a way to be able to have students engage in reading rigorous and complex texts. And then as an administrative team, we've been reading a book by Marzano called Comprehensive Framework for Effective Instruction. And this book really focuses on those student-centered instructional pieces that we're giving feedback back to our staffs during our mini observations. So we've had a level of professional development on that topic throughout the year. Continuing in strong instructional practices. As an elementary schools, we've been focusing on intervention in math. We have a variety of ways that we've been providing some of that intervention using computer-based programs such as Khan Academy or MobiMax. We also are using a variety of grouping strategies flexibly, so that we're grouping kids based on their data to focus on similar skills for short-term interventions. We are experimenting with alternative programming for some special education students. All of our students get everyday math, except for some of our students with IEPs are getting SECs in math. And we also have been working on alternative delivery models of everyday math through using either workshop models or center structures to make sure that the instruction is more student-focused. Across the district K-5, we have also worked on developing our power standards in reading and math, excuse me, reading and writing. And math will be completed before the end of the year.
As you can see on the slide, our score is not as high as we'd welcome to be. The reading score, meant, actually, the standard was 66% of our elementary kids, from 71% for the state. And math, 67 versus 63. Those are not scores that we're proud of. We're seeing the need to enhance what we're doing. The writing score, we know we've had an issue with the writing. That's why we've adopted Lucy Cockens' program to address that need. And these scores were administered in the fall of this year, so we've not had a chance to receive the growth over time. And as you probably know, that the NECA will not be administered next year. It'll be a smarter balance, it'll be done in the spring of next year. So we have a year basically without testing. And within our communities, we all have different partnerships, but overall, we all have PTAs or PTOs. We have a lot of different activities going on in all the communities. We were all involved in the 5210 Health Wellness Program and involved in the Patrefree Library. And again, this is just a smattering of what all the schools are comprised of and a lot of the connections we make.
Hello, everybody. So one commonality between all of the elementary schools is the need and desire to have our parents involved in lots of different ways. Different schools do that in different ways. Some of those are family fun nights, which focus on activities that families can come and participate in together. All schools have music concerts, band, chorus, and whole school concerts. Open houses, at the beginning of the year, always within the first few weeks of school. We have some other school-specific ones, a seasonal stroll, where food is delivered to the town hall for the Bath Food Banks. One book, one school. We have parent nights, where opportunities for parents to come in and experience literacy activities with their students. Some of our schools have student-led conferences, as well as parent-teacher conferences. Talent shows, and we all rely very heavily on all of the dozens of parent volunteers that give their time and their energy to come in to do all sorts of things. That can be help individual students in the classroom, cut up the veggies and fruit for the fruit and veggie grant. We have parents in all of our schools, and we're very, very thankful for that. All the research shows that involving kids in after-school activities have a multitude of benefits. At all of our schools, there are a variety of clubs and programs, garden clubs, Drums Alive, jump rope clubs, snowshoeing. And we rely really heavily on community volunteers, as well as, again, parents, to help support and run those programs. In all of the communities, there are very active groups that help us to do that. Honestly, the Mind is at many of our schools. Battle of the Books is a yearly event for the students in grades four, five, and six. And all of our schools have mountain teams that have the opportunity to practice together and go off to meets.
And as a district, and you certainly as a Board, have chosen to focus on early childhood education and certainly made that commitment to pre-K. And being new to the district and also being new to pre-K, I know that I've said it before, and you might be tired of hearing it, but I'm just amazed at the difference that I have seen in the students in pre-K that have come into school in September and where they are now. And I'm so excited to see where they are in June, and better yet, where they will be when they arrive in kindergarten next September. It's just been an amazing journey for those kids, and it's been an amazing journey for our school, because they are so welcome and so valued. And it's such a tremendous program and such a great thing to make a commitment to. We're so pleased with the way it's going in Pittsburgh. In West Bath, they have a program for kindergarten, I'm sorry, students who will be entering kindergarten called Ready, Set, Go. And at Pittsburgh, we have something called Team Works, and that's when kindergarten teachers work with families of kids who are entering into our schools. And some of our preschoolers are involved in that. And yet, we have maybe half dozen or so kids who don't go to the pre-K who are also taking advantage of that. We've done a lot of work with professional development this year. With our new technology eye this year, we have had tremendous opportunities to have some training in summer institutes, iPad training, and we have great support from the technology department coming into our buildings and helping teachers troubleshoot with the mechanics of their laptops or iPads, and that's been very much appreciated. Expeditionary Learning continues to grow at West Bath and focusing on math and instructional support. They're in their third year, and they continue to share with each other and locally and nationally, I understand. We've had very consistent and focused professional development in writing. You might notice the woman on the far left leaning in in white blouse is actually Lucy Cockens herself. And a few of us attended a conference. And as someone who's read so much of her work, it was very gratifying to see what a down-to-earth person she was and how she embraced those are teachers from Fisher Mitchell. And she was willing to listen to them talk and answer their questions and actually sought out from them, what do you need from me, how can I help you? And they actually literally talked about what they were doing in the classroom. That was a really big moment for, I think, all of us, kind of silly, but true. We have special educators involved in the main Autism Leadership Team, and they will be sharing that with other staff in the district and coming to us in professional development sessions. Our RSU One mentoring program continues to go strong with teachers being released to help other teachers. We have RTI literacy at Dyke Newell. There is a consultant that comes in and works with teachers to improve those early literacy skills and help teachers hone in on their instructional practices and strategy. And we also utilize experts within the system. If you go someplace and you've attended a workshop, you come back and you blog about it, you speak with your fellow colleagues at your, either your building or across the district. So we've had a lot of great opportunities, and our teaching and learning continues to grow as a result of that.
So along with all those great things that are happening in all of our schools, there are some challenges that we are currently facing. The first being the transition from grade two to three, and this is specific to Dyke Newell, the transition from Dyke Newell to Fisher Mitchell. And this is my first year at Fisher Mitchell, but it's pretty apparent that it is, it is a challenging time, that that transition from second to third grade is a challenging one when you're in a K-5 school, just developmentally and academically. There's definitely a shift there. And on top of that, right currently, the students are going from five classrooms at Dyke Newell into four at Fisher Mitchell, which increases the class size. They just kind of got settled at Dyke Newell, got their feet underneath them, got used to being in school, and then they start all over again when they come to us. So that's just been something that we're focusing a lot on this year. And Sally Brown and I, along with our staff, we're working on helping to ease that transition. Support for interventions, or RTI, is another challenge. There's certainly a need in all academic areas based on our data. But finding the personnel and the support, best way to support our kids with interventions has been a challenge. Integration of technology. We're really fortunate at all the elementary schools to have a refresh this year and have some great technology at our disposal and to use. Technology is one of those things, everyone has a different level of comfort, and using it, our tech staff is amazing, and they're in our schools, but finding ways to integrate it consistently across the elementary schools has been a challenge. Ongoing need, support for behavioral needs. Our kids are coming to us with a lot of different challenges, and having the resources to support those behavioral needs continues to be a challenge. We were really fortunate, and we really appreciated the Board's support for professional development resources that were added to the budget last year. And we have had really focused PD, we've been really fortunate this year. But it's still considers, and it still is a challenge in that we face the common core, the implementation of the Smarter Balance Assessment. the implementation of the Smarter Balance assessment. We have a lot of things on the horizon that are coming that will need professional development. But it also really focuses on the time aspect of that as well. Late Start Wednesdays are great, staff meetings, grade-level release days, but there just doesn't often seem to be enough time to get stuff done. Social resources, and what we mean by that is social workers, guidance counselors, nursing services. It seems that we're always finding that to be a challenge to meet the needs of our kids. Physical conditions of the buildings and attendance continues to be a concern at all of our schools. We all went to a conference recently looking for some great answers on how we can get our kids to school consistently and unfortunately didn't walk away with anything new. So that's something we're also focusing on as an A-team, how we can be sure that kids are there so that we can teach them and provide the services that they need.
We have a number of opportunities in the middle school for students to engage in STEM activities such as building and designing hot water heaters, wind turbine blades, doing computer programming, working with Legos and robotics. That's a new thing this year, thanks to Lawrence Kovacs. As well as through the tech ed process, the tech ed classes, learning how to build marble mazes and designing launches, popsicle launches.
And in the middle school also, we're doing community video projects at the middle school, trying to show to the elementary students as to the appropriate way to behave in lunchtime, safety features on playground, how you walk in the hallway, how you be good citizens. And they're doing, it's called trailers and their iPhone's to present to the kids, so they can see the big kids, showing them how to behave appropriately in the school.
We have a variety of wellness activities, both Bath Middle School and Woolwich has a health teacher, thanks to folks here at the board level. We have a number of students and staff involved in all those teams.
And we have open gyms. At Woolwich, we have a garden club, which is being provided by our phys ed teacher, dental clinics, jump rope club, we have twice a week right now, lots of kids participating in that.
We have a number of ways of connecting with the community. We have a good relationship with Bowden College, Bowden Learning Partners, and a fly mentoring program in which we have about twenty young ladies who are involved. The Bowden Mentoring Program happens every Friday all year long, except for when they're on college break and run break. And the Bowden Learning Partners, they come in for half a day, one day a week, and work and give students real-time opportunities to learn. Expeditions are one way that the middle school connects with the community. One expedition on energy connected with CMP, the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, another one connected with the Kennebec Esuari Land Trust. And for one of the expeditions, they were working at the fishing industry, and this room was full of tables and members of the community who came in as fishermen and working in the fishing industry and were interviewed by students here. And later on, they will share that through a narrative piece of writing with the community. Giving balls, another example, I'm sorry. One group of eighth graders this year put together and organized a dance, ran the dance. The money collected from the dance, which was in excess of $500, was sent to a community in Uganda to help with their schooling there.
We have a grandparents' day over in Woolwich in the fall. We had this year about 240 grandparents and parents coming in to eat lunch with their children and grandchildren and participate in some classes in the morning, walk for recess time. It's a good community involvement project. We do a seasonal stroll with the middle school each year. We gather food throughout the whole school and the middle school walks it over to the town office to give to the Bath Food Bank. We also do a health project called Walk to School Day, where we have all the kids dropped off the town office. And we have 367 kids and 700 parents walking across Route 1. That's just probably goes it off for us. And we started our day off that way. We have a supper, that's for the eighth grade class trip, which is a huge community supporting event. We get hundreds of people coming in. And as we know, the Washington DC trip for all eighth graders in Woolwich to go to Washington DC for the week.
We continue at the middle schools, both Woolwich and Bath Middle School, to have a large number of students participating in sports activities. We have a number of students besides sports and also participating in sports or in band and chorus. We have three math teams at the Bath Middle School and student council and yearbook, students participating, students participating in after-school wellness activities, nutrition classes, ultimate frisbee, intramural volleyball and floor hockey, as well as a geography bee in Bath Middle School. Alex Gates, and I'm sure you've heard this, has won all three times here at Bath Middle School and is looking to participate at the state level for the third straight year as well.
When we look at our NECA scores for middle school, what we find that by the time our students do go through the K to 8 system, that they are doing typically equal to or better than the state in all areas. If you notice here, the reading score, we were 80% proficient, which means that students either met or exceeded the standard and with a statement of 72. And same thing with math and same thing with writing. Again, we will be looking at doing the Lucy Cockens program in the middle school in most areas to see if we can enhance our writing scores as well. October 11th, we had technology training, which we're focused on iPass and a variety of other structures. We're spending a lot of our time on these seven ways.
EL Institute, and they came back with all kinds of stuff to teach their peers. And the March Workshop, the two-day workshop that's coming up, it'll be a train, the trainers' model, as both those teachers will be duplicating what they learned at the National Institute. And we also had teachers attend the National EL Conference and they've already come back and work with us during our APG time and Late Start Wednesdays and sharing what they've learned from that national conference as well.
If you look at the picture in the bottom right-hand corner, that is very interesting, a fourth grade teacher at Woolwich who is our resident guru of iPass. Look at that very closely, you see a picture of him in the upper right-hand corner, and you see a silhouette at the bottom, and he's presenting to peers in school some ideas about the iPass.
Challenges in our middle schools, we're still looking at expanding the life skills program. We need an alternative education program. We need to provide continued behavior supports for our students. And those students who are not meeting the standards, we need more academic support for those students as well.
And thank you for your kind words. Academic achievement and growth. Morris High School has a very strong AP program. We had seventeen AP scholars. And when we flip to the next slide, you'll see a chart that shows the 84% of our students scoring a three or higher, which is quite a bit better than state or global levels. Our music department had six students chosen to attend District 3, and one act's right around the corner. And every year, Morris High School has an original play written by a student. And I don't know of another school in the state that does a... Our ocean ball team is an academic competition, and they play second, third this year, they did very well. Our JMG program has grown to the point where probably our specialist bosses are going to say, wave the white flag, there's enough. Fifty-six is pushing it. And I don't know how she does it, but she does an amazing job with these fifty-six students. And I also want to mention the debate team I have under the clubs and other activities, but they're strong performers every year, and that's not easy. This is a slide that shows the five-year AP score summary, and this is a percentage of students that get a three or higher, which is a cutoff for counting towards a college course when students go on to college. And it's nice to see it growing, seventy-seven, eighty-two, eighty-four, while globally and statewide, it's pretty much remained flat. What I see when I look at this chart, our seasoned teachers getting better at their craft preparing our students for those exams. It's nice to see. This is a sample of a few of our connections with the communities. FCLC, it's a school-community liaison committee, it's sort of like a hybrid, our student council group. They had a very successful Thanksgiving food drive, and I saw the car leave the parking lot and it was stuffed full, it was unbelievable. And Martin Luther King Junior Walk, I think there was over 150 participants this year, and they got high praise from the folks that were there. Our school nurses, our school nurse was part of a group that reached out to the community and bring some food shop clinics. She also conducts youth suicide prevention presentations, and the latest one was at the Bath Rotary Club, and she has been invited to do another presentation locally. Our JMG students have completed already this year over 200 hours of community service. And our entire freshman class would be doing the same thing beginning of May. We had a very successful blood drive. Our science students participate in outside enrichment programs, Bigelow Labs and some other, Department of Marines Science, Career Day, and some other things. Probably Scott, when he covers athletics, we'll talk more about John Underwood's presentation, Life of an Athlete. We have a fully staffed career center, staffed with volunteers that just do amazing things, but mostly seniors. And it doesn't matter if a student's going to a four-year university or straight to work, they'll help a student with anything that they need. And some of our students, that's their safe place, that's like their place where they go and they know that they're welcomed and wanted, and it becomes their home. We have trouble with them not going to class wanting to be in the career center sometimes. The Alumni Association is extremely active, I don't think that's a surprise to anyone in this room. I was very surprised coming to Lincoln Academy, and I thought we had a lot of scholarship money because of an endowment. And the amount of scholarships that our seniors receive way more at Morris High School, and it's because of this group, very successful. Our librarian is probably largely responsible for the food pantry and the clothing that we have for needy students. It's amazing, it's like one of these things that quietly happens. The need is real and it's amazing that we're able to do it. And she involves a lot of community partners in that work. This is a list, a partial list of some of the clubs and competitions that we have. I'm not going to read it all to you, I'll spare you that. I just, what this represents is if you can't make an athletic team, but you need to be physically active, there's a place. If you like to write, there's a place. If you need to play saxophone, there's a place, and everything else. It's important that our students get involved and stay involved with things beyond the academic world, and these are some of the things that we offer at Morris. Staff recognition and professional development, we've spent a great deal of our professional time, starting pretty much at the beginning of the year and many of our Late Start Wednesdays, working with the school coach from Great Schools Partnership, Ken Tumpleton is his name, trying to get our departments and folks lining their curriculum with Common Core standards and moving towards proficiency-based education. And we're making progress and things are going well and the pace is sane enough, so the teachers are doing well with it. We did open our first day together, we spent the entire day diet tech training, drug impairment training, so we could recognize the signs of students who are impaired. And there's a group of us, next month, will be getting a second day training. I have some staff working on advanced degrees, one on a PhD, and several of the areas are listed here. And again, the NAMI training, that's our nurse reaching out to the community to provide more awareness around youth suicide prevention. This is a list of the class of 2013 college acceptances. This crowns the work, this is what we do. When you look at the list, you say, okay, yeah, that's what we do. Students who are headed to a four-year university or a two-year college, that's where they're going. And if you look at our school profile, another little thing to be proud of here is that 83% of last year's graduated class declared that they had made post-secondary plans. When we got together at recognition assembly a few weeks ago, I had the seniors stand that had plans, you know, just stand, that they had plans all set to go on. And I would say about 80% of those seniors stood up already, it was quite amazing. That's something really to be proud of. We do have our challenges, just like the middle school, alternative education programs, the regular classroom and regular schools just doesn't work for every student. We had something called the academy before my time here. We are going to try and find a way to budget something for next year so that we can meet the needs of students who probably are dropping off by their senior year because they just can't face the realities of a more conventional classroom. And on the same route, we need stronger supports in place for also for our grades nine to 10 students. We could probably use another full-time social worker slash drug and alcohol counselor, to be honest. And there's been a creep, our freshman class is 169, largest class in the school. So the ninth grade team, their caseloads have increased, the classes, the courses that they teach outside of the ninth grade team, each one seems to have one. And it's hard to identify track and really keep people lit on the students who begin to struggle before grade time or something if there's so many. We're looking at the ninth grade team model currently and identifying all the strengths and where improvement's going to be made and looking at all of it. And no surprise to anyone, Morris High School has some facility needs. The bond money, it's amazing what the bond money will do. Just the windows, the heat controls and some of the other heating system, science lab improvement's going to be wonderful. But there's still going to be needs, you know, floors, walls, ceilings, the acoustics in some of the rooms are horrible, and that will need to be addressed at some point. Basic things like desks and chairs and other furniture and some electrical upgrades in rooms. The rooms that aren't going to be part of the bondage, you will still seriously lack electrical outlets and things like that. And I'm going to go off script just for a minute before I turn over to Scott to cover athletics. And I just want to thank the board for supporting the SRO position when you went through this process, the budget process last year. Some of the information that I sent along, like in the last report, it looks as though we've increased our attendance rate by 25% according to all the information that's in infinite campus. That doesn't mean that we're getting kid 25% more of our student body to get out of bed and come to school in the morning. When I look at the numbers, what that means is that they're getting out of bed and coming to school and then they're going to their classes. And he's helping me with that work. It's attendance and student accountability and a whole lot of other things. Very, very key person in that work and trying to get things back on the right track. And I really appreciate your continued support. It's key to my work, it's the school's, my goals. So thank you very much.
I don't need to read that for you, but what I would like to do is just say a few things about each of those items. Obviously, the new turf field at McMahon is a culmination of several years of hard work and community effort, work by this group, work by the school, work by private individuals. And it's only going to benefit RSU1. We've already been fortunate enough to host the state soccer championships this fall, which brought in excess of 6,000 people to our community. That 6,000 people who went to Booster Club and bought hot dogs, ate in our businesses in town, stayed in the hotels in town, stayed in the bed and breakfast, and got to witness what our school looks like and our school campuses look like. Those are great things. We hosted the state classroom Those are great things. We hosted the state classroom wrestling tournament last Saturday here, Saturday at fifteen here at BMS, right in that gym. And again, brought people to our community. Those are good things and things to be proud of. The effort that Dave Richards put in and his group put in in terms of beautifying that gymnasium. We celebrated fifty years of using the BOS gym this winter. Fifty years of basketball, fifty years of, of events, fifty years of wrestling, fifty years of kids running through that gym. And it looks fantastic. The bleachers look great. The banners look great. We have some curb appeal and some things to be proud of and that's, that's no small task. This fall, we had three teams qualify for the postseason. Approximately one-third of our students were student athletes this fall. And at the high school level, that's a substantial number of kids. That doesn't take into account the intramural activities. That doesn't take into account the clubs. That doesn't take into account the Strohleary's move in Ohio. It's, those are just the student athletes and not the amount that they participate. This winter, we had five of our teams qualify for the postseason. Two were at the Boden Pool, BMS Gym, the Augusta Civic Center, the Portland Expo, the Bates Track. Fewer at any of those places this past vacation week, you saw our student athletes performing, performing with great pride. In your track, seventh-place medalist relay team, fourth-place finishers for individuals in our wrestling championships. If you were able to go to the Portland Expo last Saturday, saw a double overtime win. I, I've received no fewer than a dozen calls about our sportsmanship, our student section, how great the kids at Morse High School are. We don't hear that enough. I don't know if you folks hear that enough. How great the kids at Morse High School are. A young man wearing a Wales, a Yale sweatshirt next to him. I'd rather it were green than when she was going to Dartmouth. We have great kids at Morse High School and we have great adults at Morse High School. And we want to keep shouting those statements from the rooftops if we can. We had twenty-four seniors to this point in the academic year who were named all-academic, all-conference. That's a great accomplishment. Twenty-four of our seniors maintained a ninety percent or better grade point average through six semesters of academic performance and performed at a high level athletically as well. JP discussed the, or brought up the John Underwood presentation. Fewer at Morse High School this fall, September eleventh, we filled Montgomery Theater to the rafters, all to come here and gentlemen speak about how we can improve our performance. And he wasn't just talking about performance on the field during the gyms. He was talking about all of us being better, striving for excellence. And what we've done at Morse High School, we have a group called Shipbuilders Committee. On a regular basis, three times a month, we meet on Late Start Wednesdays. Dr. Manuel, Charlie Benjamin, myself gather with these, with these young people. And all they want to do is strive to be better and make our school a better place to be. They commit to being drug and alcohol free. They commit to supporting their classmates and teammates. They commit to being the best that they can be. I, I would love to have any one of you folks join us for one of our Late Start Wednesday meetings. It's a really great place to be with great, great kids. And lastly, one of the items we talked about last year during this time was better collaboration between Wilbrook Central School, that middle school, and Morse High School athletic departments. What we've done, we've gone to monthly meetings where the athletic directors from all three of our schools gather. We share our concerns. We talk about ways that we can improve, not just as individual schools, but as a, as a district. I think that's got a long way to go because we've got a lot of work to do, but it's gone very well to this point. Again, I would just echo what JP said. Thank you for your continued support. What we're doing at Morse High School is a good thing. Shout it from the rooftops.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to do this, you know? We're very proud of the work we do at the RCTC. And I want to extend my appreciation to the board and to the voters for continuing to support that work. It isn't always as, it doesn't, it doesn't come with the kind of fanfare that, that we see sometimes at, at the academic level. But the work we do is really important and, and gives back significantly to, to our communities and to, to our voters. I've, I've given you here just some bullets. I'm, I'm not going to run through them all. And this is hardly total or inclusive. But those are the, the highly visible things that we do. Constructing that house every year, you know, the work we do in the auto shop and, and the work we do, the meals we provide through our Color House program. Every one of our technical programs is involved with live work. That's work that provides a service to some segment of our community, that provides teaching opportunities to our students, and provides visibility for the work we do at the tech center. Another opportunity to say thank you. This, this slide is, is really important. This is, last year, this, the board and the voters supported increasing our academic support person to full-time. That has enabled us to broaden our reach into our, our center of work we do in the academic, rather, in our technical classes. We are providing a Morse High School English class for students who couldn't fit in an appropriate English class and still attend our programs. We provide interventions, academic interventions and technicals, technical study interventions for all of our students through our academic support program. We conduct center-wide professional development for our teachers, focusing on academic methods and, and strategies for our kids. We provide Accuplexer testing for admissions testing for all of our students. This assists our students in making decisions about post-secondary plans. Something close to a third of our students will go on to either main community colleges or trade school. And we are heavily involved in, in helping our students develop portfolios, develop digital resumes, and develop the, the soft skills they need to enable them to go to school or to go into the workplace when they finish with that long range. We do have some challenges. You've heard this from me before probably. One of our biggest challenges right now is, is helping a long-range sport or dealing with the infrastructure at the RCTC. Particularly in the new, the windows opened, it says nineteen years. Gosh, I think it was seventeen, but nineteen must be correct. And that, it refreshed everything in the center. We, we opened the Color House program with wonderful new equipment. We have a beautiful certified professional kitchen. But that equipment is aging out and it's very expensive to replace. So we are developing a three- to five-year plan, working with our advisory committee and with our, with the superiors from all four of our, our systems to identify how we're going to replace that equipment, which, which is the replacement. The picture here of the, the condensers which operate our walk-in refrigeration and walk-in freezer. And it's, it's really the most graphic example of, of the problem we face right now. It is battered, it is exposed, and it is costly to replace. We, we provide fairly serious maintenance on that, that, that equipment now every year to keep it running. This is our second, the second biggest or biggest challenge. It doesn't have as many budget implications as, as the infrastructure piece does, but it, it reflects an ongoing source of concern for us at the RCTC. Our enrollment has declined somewhat over the last several years. As you can see, I gave you some enrollment figures for the last eight years. And in that timeframe, our four Sunday schools enrollment has declined by about thirty percent. That's the pool from which we, we enroll, recruit students for our programs. And it has had an impact on our ability to, to enroll students and fill our programs with the rest of right now, what the implications are of that for the long term. The, the second concern related to enrollment, of course, is, as Jay pointed out, we, we still struggle with, with keeping our kids engaged. The truth is, we pick up only, primarily juniors and seniors, some sophomores. By the time those students get to us, they have struggled for, many of the students have struggled for so many years on the academic side that it, it is, it's a difficult task for us to hold on to, to keep them hooked into our program. And I believe that's what we're doing. Keep them hooked into our program so that they also stay connected to the academic program. We are, we are more than willing to work with those students who are prepared to leave high school to keep them connected in some manner to the work we do. We work collaboratively with Adult Education to do that. We are very, we really work hard to, we're very committed to that, better. But again, by the time kids get to that point of seventeen, eighteen years old and, and years of struggle, sometimes they just, they don't know the reasons. They don't have the perseverance that they need at that point. So we struggle with keeping those students engaged. We are pretty creative about it, but it, but it is, it is one of our, our challenges.
I'm not sure why everybody thinks everybody is tall, but it's just not true. Thank you for the very kind words to administration before beginning. Frankly, I have never been acknowledged in that way by board. And I've never heard my colleagues acknowledged that way and it meant a great deal. Thank you so much for that. Special education is my favorite area. And I want to thank the board and the community for the first two items on this list because last year you all supported the addition of a life skills program. We made that a grade span of four to six. And it has been through this year growing and a great success so far. We have seen students come in who needed very specific supports and instruction. And we see that we can provide that earlier and we can get them in touch with their communities earlier. And that carries through then to the main school and high school. So thank you so much for that. Our students are definitely benefiting. We also increased ed tech support last year by two positions. And those both went to support students in two of our schools that are identified with autism. That support has been essential. And one of those students frankly had struggled for years and had a great, very difficult to be a part of the school community. And he has flourished this year. I can't say a lot more than that except to say it's really nice not to get reports that he continues to struggle and that he can't make it because he can. And he, he is really doing fantastic things. So thank you for both of those things. The main autism leadership training continues. We actually had a meeting just before February break and that's a team of about ten people. Membership is changing a little bit this year, but they are being trained as leaders for the district so that they can identify and bring back to other teachers and staff research-based practices that will support our students with autism. And hopefully, we will be teaming even more closely with SAD seven-five in Thompson so that these efforts become regional in nature. So that's our hope. For the staff development days coming up in March, both of those in part will be devoted to beginning specific training with special ed staff around what we have discovered and established so far. So it's good to see that work move forward. There's training being provided by the DOE at the state level to align our IEP goals, individual education plan goals with Common Core standards. You've heard folks talk tonight about identifying those standards in reading, math, of reading, writing, and eventually math. For every one of those, when our students have IEP goals in those areas, eventually they all have to be aligned with those standards, which makes great sense and it's a great deal of work. So we appreciate that the training is being provided now. And we're beginning to practice writing those goals in a much more specific way. That will be ongoing for a while, but I'm glad to say that our staff, we have a team of five people that went to those trainings and brought it back to the rest of their colleagues. And rather than come back and kind of hang their heads and say, you know, this is just too much. It's one more thing. We don't know how we're going to do it. They frankly came back rather energized and said, we can do this work. We will do this work and we'll make it happen. And we're going to put our energy into this. And they truly have, I'm very, very proud of them. There's training to create more thorough post-secondary transition plans, not only on a regional level, but also district-wide. This is part of the IEP as well. And as I heard folks talking about, especially at the high school vocational levels, about transitioning into adulthood and our students having plans and goals, we struggle with that for some of our students with identified needs. And this is a part of the IEP where we have to really, really specifically help them plan and help them sort through some details of what it's going to take to help them be successful in the world beyond school. Because for many of them, that will continue to be a challenge. And regionally, we are, the mid-coast area has done two trainings so far that we've been involved in, so that we set regional goals around those transition plans. And that's important work. And it's just beginning now, but it will go on for a while. And we are also going to do some staff training, more specifically on behavioral needs. And we, we really, really want to focus on our ed tech positions, especially because we ask so much of those folks and we don't always give them the support that they need. And that will be important to do so in March. Parts of those professional development days will be used for those things. And executive functioning skills, which is all about organization and task initiation and knowing how to, how to break a task down into discrete steps. That's very important, that's a very important skill set. And you would be surprised with how many of our students really, really struggle with that. So there is much more specific information in this field now. And one of our school psychologists and our special ed teachers has recently attended current training on that. And they are going to bring that back to their colleagues in March. And I'm very excited to have that happen because we see that need really, really often. Our needs, I can say pretty simply. And for the board at least, this will come as any surprise. We need the additional section of life skills so that we can extend this from grades three through twelve. You may ask why K-two has not been in there. We would not exclude those students. We'd like to keep young students especially very close to their classrooms. And so we really would like to primarily begin that specialized programming around breakthrough. But that's never to say that if a student needed a specific kind of support that they wouldn't be included somehow. And again, I want to explain that that doesn't mean they're self-contained and they're not part of the school community. The best life skills programs allow students to blend in and out, to receive very discreet and direct instruction as they need to and, but still participate in that school community and be part of all that that means. We do need a district-wide behavior consultant. You've heard that reiterated by a couple of other folks tonight. In my mind, that position would provide primarily to staff the resources and the consultation to be able to brainstorm and create plans that are database, that can be tracked and can be revised as needed. But it would be a consistent service. So it wouldn't be a meeting here or a meeting there as we can squeeze them in and hope that somebody can come that might be able to help us. We really need somebody that we can call on on a regular basis in every school. So if we were able to eventually add that position, we would pretty well wear out several pair of shoes for that person. And the last is to expand the capacity of special ed administration. The needs in special education and the demands and the regulations are not diminishing. They will continue to increase, especially as we pursue standard-based education. And frankly, we're going to need a little more help eventually. So that's special education in a nutshell. But I'm not sure what Hoppsel launches are, but I'm pretty sure I need to get those with special.
Good evening. Again, I would like to thank you for the experience of hearing somebody say that us as administrators are appreciated and doing the job. It's very nice. Thank you again. As you all know, we have transitioned in the state domain from the GED testing to high set testing. This has been quite a challenge, but we've done it. We're actually testing students. Didn't test anybody today, but did before, before vacation and it's going pretty well. It's a little different from GED as far as preparation, but we're working on that too. That too is going well. We are offering, continuing to offer program areas in our academic, career pathways, college transitions, and enrollments, to the tune of approximately sixteen hundred registrations so far this year, and this week starts a new run of registrations for us. Really, really pleased, and Joel mentioned it, our collaboration with our CTC, we do help with trying to keep students in school, and we also have a fabulous working relationship with the Early Child Education Program, where our Salem Literacy Family Literacy Program, children, birth-to-three-year-olds, go to their early learning center in the mornings while their parents are upstairs in the adult learning center. And it's phenomenal to watch the BRCTC students with the birth-to-three-year-olds. And we do have some really tiny ones too, some of the youngest, I think it's about eight weeks old, that's giving the students an experience that they wouldn't normally get.
We have been awarded fifty-one thousand dollars worth of grants so far this year. I think I'm done for this year. We have twenty thousand dollars from the Federal Literacy Program, and that serves approximately two hundred part-time academic students, students that are working on a high school diploma or a HISA. And we have, out of that two hundred, we have at least sixty students that are attending twelve-plus hours a week. Our Barbara Bush Family Literacy Grant gave us eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That went from just a grant program to a scholarship program where our families actually have to apply, and we have had so far this year, twelve families, ten each semester, two transitioned out from last semester. It's a total of fourteen parents and nineteen children under the age of ten. Our Maine College Transition Extension Grant, we are using that money specifically for helping adults go back to college. We are working with them, specifically with math and English. They go take their ACT placement tests, they don't do so well, so they come back to us. We are also providing, with that money, a college transition advisor, and she was actually at school when I left this evening for the very first time, and she had, when I left, she had met with three students. Connect Maine Broadband Technical Assistance Initiative is specifically for technology. Dean Emerson helped me with that, and we have chosen some technology to be used to help students transition from the paper testing of HISA to the computer testing. A year from right now, it will be a hundred percent computer-based rather than paper-based. And then our Davenport Foundation Grant is something that I am, it's our smallest grant, twenty-five hundred dollars, but it has been one of the most effective expenditures of money that I have witnessed in my thirty-five years of adult education. We are working specifically with the working community, and the director of that program, Shelley Taylor, comes to the vocational school every Monday morning for two and a half hours, and she works one-on-one with the adult students. It was based on the Family Literacy Grant, the Salem Literacy Program. We are bringing in all of our adults that need help. She does everything from career counseling to ONET, to college applications, financial aid applications, resumes, cover letters, employment applications. As a result of her working with us just last fall, we have four students that are now in college with financial aid, and at least ten students that were unemployed when they came to us that are now employed. On the horizon for fall is our new collaboration with Condensed Curriculum Incorporated, which is an online learning program, and we will be offered, right now, we work with them on phlebotomy, EKG, certified clinical medical assistance, everybody passed that national exam last week, by the way. And in the fall, we will have business, project management, computer specialists, green building, criminal justice, corrections, and patient specialists, and I can go on and on. It's an exciting, exciting program, and it will be at no cost to us, other than providing a place for it to happen and the technology for it to happen with. Our challenge is, like everybody with the new standards, we have to align everything that we do with the adult standards, just like there's English standards for K-3, there's adult standards in English and math, and even career pathways. So, right now, we don't have a whole lot of time in order to do this. I personally have developed IEPs for nearly two hundred students. I have assistance from one three-hour period a week for somebody that's paying. She volunteers an awful lot, I will tell you that. Couldn't do it without her. But this is our biggest challenge right now. Every single student, even if they're coming in just to take the HISA test, and that's all they wanna do, I have to have a documented IEP for them that the state does come in and look at. That's my challenge. We do a lot of fun things too. Thank you.
I think we only have three slides left, so we're almost done. Facilities, I'm not gonna read this, but the vision is here, if you go to the next slide. Some of our goals that we've come up with, I think really the third bullet down, we try to maximize the use of our facilities, and we think a goal, which I think is an example, as well as all of our buildings, the system, try to maximize education when it uses those, but also the time it requires and resources for all of them. The fourth bullet down, we're number eleven on the state list, Mount Airhead is number seven. They funded one through six, so obviously, Mount Airhead would be the next one that would be funded once an announcement comes out, and it would be three after that. You know, one question that comes up quite a bit is, you know, where the next slide you'll see is five point two million dollar bond was approved by the voters in the fall, and the majority of that work is geared towards Morse, and certainly is necessary. But I do want people to know that we are on the phone on a monthly basis with Jim Ryer and Scott Brown at the Department of Education, because if an announcement is made this summer, and instead of having, you know, the prediction of having a Morse High School in eight to ten years becomes six to seven years, which again, we can't control, but keeping that open communication there, so that, for example, if there is an item or two or five that are on the list that we've created of projects for Morse High School, take science lab updates, if we know we're gonna get a new Morse High School sooner than we think, then that may be one as an example where we don't do, or we don't do to the degree that we planned to do, because we're gonna be in a new school or running it in school, certainly we think. So, I just wanted to be clear about that. The one on this is just that the bond, the top two, five point two million dollars, and the board has structured this bond to become new as all debt is retired, and it's over ten.
So, this was a very busy year for us, as we rounded the corner on MLTI IV. We had to wrap up all aspects of MLTI III, turn devices to the state and that sort of thing. And then deploy for MLTI IV, that involved laptops for teachers, as well as iPads, and iPads for students in grades seven through twelve. It was a transition, not just in terms of the device, obviously, but in nearly all aspects of how they're used. We were also able to refresh the technology in grades K through six. This was a first step. As you may recall, the technology in many of our linear schools has not been refreshing on a regular basis for probably six to nine years. It's well overdue, necessary, I would say, but it's been done. We were able to configure a new email archiving server. State law requires us, the state federal law requires us to archive our mail, all communications that come through the district. We moved servers from the technology office to a dedicated server room. This dealt with workplace safety issues, as well as the efficiencies of the devices and longevity of the new stuff. We were able to, one of the staff people on the board now is really into making short videos for staff, how-to videos and that sort of thing. So, we've created a YouTube channel, and he's publishing short how-to videos for staff, as well as for students or other members. Currently moving all of our user accounts to active directory for single-user sign-on, so that instead of having a different username and password for every system that we have, which, instead, everybody, at this point, we're in phase one, but by the end of the summer, everybody will just have one username and password for nearly every system that we use. It's very interesting. Moment? No? It's all, it'll actually be much easier for us. Now, we're implementing a recording server that will allow us to have easier access to student data, so that we can manipulate that data and respond to basically teachers and administrators who ask us for different ways to look at data to see how things are doing. So, this server will help us. What I did put on air was a challenge, and I think our greatest challenge has already been alluded to in the technology department, and that really is integration. We're very lucky to be in a district that you've supported us, and we've had the ability to pick up and deploy really nice tools for everyone to use for their education. What we need now is the leadership and the time for staff to learn how to use them effectively so we can get the most value out of the investment.
Just in general, overall, our staff, from custodial crew, you know, we contract out to food service people, to our support staff, to our teachers, very dedicated, caring, knowledgeable staff that we have here. We have people sitting here in this room tonight that, you know, spend time outside of school, taking kids on different trips. We have people here that have worked at auctions, that raise money, that are in this room tonight, people that just go and walk me all, and a lot of our staff do, for the best interest of students. Tim opened the meeting tonight, talking about our administrative team, very competent, experienced, and knowledgeable, and also creative and caring, and a good sense of humor. We have two people, Sam and Jay, that we hired this year and have been a great additions to our administrative team, and it's a pleasure to work with them. Support of the board, we're involved tonight, and it's not just about the money, it's asking the questions, it's being, you know, in our schools, that's why we set up boardwalks. You know, I think we've done well, and by, you know, surprising rule between administration and board, and I really thank you for the support, which is a nice monitor. I don't know if I'd say this when I first came here, but union leadership has been a very positive relationship, it truly has, and I think we may not always agree on things, but I think it's very important to have a productive relationship, it doesn't want from a moral system, and we may not agree on everything, but that's the way it is, and I really thank the union leadership. And I think we take all of those things together, in my mind, put all those together in a productive relationship, we have a system that's continually improving because of it. Focused on meeting the needs of every student, let me go back to the administrative team. We don't always meet everybody together, and we have two people in this room tonight, just quickly, Scott Walker, as an athletic director, I used to be an athletic director, and the nights out, the early mornings, the weekends, you know, he doesn't often get enough credit, and Rossburg, which he was also in this room. Being assistant principal and being there for more than a couple of years is a challenging job, and sometimes I'm very, I guess I'm a bit of that. And he also does it between two school buildings, and he is the first person to go out and do a whole business and really reach and connect students, and I appreciate that. Meeting the needs of every student, I know that sounds a little corny, and maybe pie in the sky for some of you, but we have students that are, you know, sitting at this table tonight that are high flyers, that are motivated from day one, get into exceptional colleges, and our job is to challenge and to find areas where we can have them be enriched and again, provide that challenge. If we can't provide it here, it's finding a way outside of our system at Moen College online, you know, ways to challenge the students and the opponents. We have students that are on the other end of the spectrum that we cannot get to come to school. So, we have administrators, we have teachers, we have SROs that make whole business, that connect them with services in our town, in our cities, to help them get the support that they need so they can be successful. And then we have students in the gray area, I just had to deal with in Southern Community Office today, talking about how we need to get students that have the capacity and the ability to go on to some type of college, and how can we make that better and more accessible for them. So, again, that's what I mean by all of our staff being focused on meeting the needs of the administration. Community connections and support, I was gonna try to give you the number tonight, but I know I would forget something, but it really is community support money-wise. We have so many organizations, you know, that it'd be hard to list them all tonight, but the amount of money, our teaching staff, we're willing to take the initiative to give grants, and the amount of money that our students have available to them upon graduation, it really is, you know, amazing. And community support, what I mean by that is, we have five communities. We may not always agree on everything, but in my time here, even if we don't agree, then we can start in a very professional manner, and, you know, I just appreciate that, so far I'm attending. Last thing is, and I said this, I think, last year, but I'm just a firm believer in students making, they make their education their own education, the initiative and the desire that they have, and I think in this system, I know in this system here, that students have a wonderful opportunity to challenge themselves academically, in the arts, but also on the athletic fields, of course, as well. So, I'll end with that, and see if you, I don't want to go through this quickly, and we didn't really bring up the questions, but this should be the time until, I think, people have his questions, or actually, if the team tonight has questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again to the administration. If there's anyone here who has questions, I'll open up the mic. At the same time, all of our administrators can be contacted, they have email addresses on the website, you can contact them at the school. If there's something, if they have questions about some of the language, or some statistics, or certain programs that you didn't understand, they can be contacted that way, especially folks at home who may watch this. You know, a lot of this jargon, it can get a little overwhelming, and I think they'd be happy to take the questions at school. But is there anyone here right now who might have some questions regarding the presentation? Again, you know, thanks to you folks for coming out tonight, it's required a lot of your time, and we will work again. For those of you who showed up in the audience, I want to thank you, it means a lot to me, it means a lot to the board, and I think if anybody can attend a board meeting over the course of the year, this is really the one to see, because you get a big snapshot of what we're doing across the board, from pre-K all the way to adult education, and you see where the challenges are, you see where there's carryover. That old metaphor about the sausage-making process, education is very much like making sausage. It's sometimes it's a little hard to watch, but it can really be a beautiful thing as well. And the fact that we have to, you know, remember as a community, we are the largest restaurant in town, we have the most number of bathrooms in the community. We have the most number of bathrooms in the community. We transport the most people on any given day, maybe next to Bath Ironberg. And we have children that arrive in our schools that not only need to be educated, but need to be nurtured, they need to be fed, they need to be clothed. And the challenges that our educators are facing are vast, and hence, you know, a big part of your tax dollars goes towards education. So it's important for us to recognize how those dollars are being spent and how that's translating across the district. And I think that this, this meeting is so beneficial for the board as we move into budget talks, and hopefully, you know, beneficial for the community. So I would encourage more participation on that end. So that said, I'll release the administrators. I know that you want to stick around, you're more than welcome to, but you've probably got a long day tomorrow. And thank you again, and we will move on to committee reports. I will begin with item 8.1, Facilities Committee Report. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, this is a report of progress. Hopefully, Mother Nature will be cooperative, then we can kick off a subcommittee with the Facilities Committee to start taking a hard look at the elementary schools and the planning for the future of the elementary schools on March 11. We got wiped out this past month by Mother Nature, but we have a special number of volunteers that have come forth from various communities in the system. We're going to be joining with the Facilities Committee, and we're going to start our in-depth look at and planning for the future of our elementary system. Box 11 is the kickoff.
Okay. Any questions for Bill, authority of Facilities, or what he's doing?
Patrick covered the horse angle on that committee's process. We have developed this one.
Okay. Then I'll turn this over to Steve, and he pointed to Finance Committee Report.
The Finance Committee did not meet this month, the month of February, I think, I think it was weather-related, I can't, I can't remember, but we are meeting Monday, starting at 7:30 to begin our, our budget review process. All, all board members should have received today by email budget information from Ruth, and hopefully everyone will have an opportunity to participate in those meetings. I think we're blocked from 7:30 to about 11 o'clock in the morning. And it has proved to be a very, an excellent way to, for the board to immerse itself in the budget and, and really to ask, ask questions of the administrators as they make their presentations. So hopefully we'll see you all 7:30 on Monday, March 3.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Patrick on those meetings on Monday? Okay. We will move on to item 8.3, Patent Free Committee Assignment. I know that last month there was some discussion as to whether or not somebody, the folks at Patent Free Library wanted us on that board, and I guess it is stated that, that is part of the membership. So do we have a volunteer who would like to serve on the Patent Free Committee?
Well, I currently serve, and I'd be willing to serve again.
Great, good to have you, Steve. Thank you. You're on the Patent Free Committee. All right, we'll move on to item 8.4, which is the West Bath Withdrawal Committee Report. Kyle, would you like to speak to that?
Hopefully you're me. First, I want to start off by thanking Tim and Steve for coming there to begin the meeting. The weather was very poor, and because of the conditions outside of our, our control with the timeframe, scheduling this meeting was difficult, so they didn't make the time to get there disposed. So thank you for doing that. The meeting was short, it was about 15 minutes long. The purpose of the meeting was to really elect the chair and then transition the control from Tim over to the chairperson of that committee, which should happen. The other time spent is kind of to get to know each other. A lot of the people on that committee don't know each other, even though they live in town, they may know each other by name, but didn't know where they were, who they were. So there was some of that, and a little bit of discussion about the procedure, the goals and that, that type of stuff, but nothing really formal. We also set up a regular meeting, which will be Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Meetings will be public. I think there'll be time for public comment at those meetings at some level. And that was the most, what really happened, I mean, there wasn't all that much, just basic discussions.
Any questions for Kyle? That meeting? And just to make note, Kyle and Peter O'Soreco were named as co-chairs of that committee. It's a four-person committee, and Peter and Kyle will be chairing the chairmanship. And this Wednesday's meeting, I think, is at, is it at the town?
It's at the Fire Station. So I think, I'll go with, they'll move to the town hall.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
Patrick, there are just two quick items. We move forward with Harold and Associates to work with us on the bond. Bill, Perkins, myself, and David, just were involved in, and you made two for our, I think, that Harold was here or that we were in last week, going to look at our facilities, just make sure there were no surprises on their end. And we're soon to be in the process of negotiating a fee with them, based on what they vow. And our bond financial person, they're writing, I think someone who met before, is, all of our paperwork that we gave with bond is in, and that he feels like we should be able to have the money available by beginning to develop a meeting. So everything's going well with that. Last thing I had is just, we had a staff who were at the horse, they took students to what's called a type of challenge, which is really a business sponsorship or competition that happens in the state of Maine, where we had five students participate, and they're paired with a community business person, and then they go to this competition. And they are students that quite often were first time doing this, and I think we had two students who took first place for their industry in round two of the challenge. And it was just, a couple of those five students have come back and went and shared their experience, and I think we'll have four students go in the district. And Mr. Pinkin, they mentioned Ocean Mall, which is really a, you know, science hath a background, biology piece, and we had two teams go, they did very well, and we had one team that came in second, only to found a high school. And I think it was the first time this school in Maine actually won the competition. But our students gave in second place, and as a result, we'll get to have a, a day-long, I guess, almost paying a field trip to UNE, buy to their research labs, tour the facility, and I think maybe to go out on a boat to look at different things, science-related. So Julie LaRosa, like the backup dating team, and they did very well.
Okay, any questions for Patrick? All right, we'll move on to item 9.2, Financial Report.
Patrick? Yeah, nothing glaring in this one. If you remember, if you happen to have your whole packet with you, the projection was to maybe, was a little bit over $400,000 last time, as a prediction at the end of the year that we would have left. But that's gone down to about $330,000. Again, that can be adjusted every month. But the two major things, was I was talking with Ruthie today, is transportation, you know, some special ed transportation that's fluctuated and gone up, has hurt us a little bit, as well as, obviously, with the weather temperatures and, you know, just heating our buildings has really taken a toll on us a little bit more. So still no surprises, and just wanted to update you on that.
Any questions on the financial report?
Is it possible to add a column to this report that would add in what was last month? Just for the comparison from month to month?
Sure. I think we can do that.
And I just had a question, comparing the last one, a big change was in transportation. The percentage remaining went from a positive 5.6 to negative 1.7?
Yeah, I think it was a combination of special ed transportation, as well as, you know, when I was talking to Ruth this morning, that I think a bill came in from Bath Bus Service, but we didn't catch it on the last one, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. I'm going to table review of board goals. No need to go over that tonight. We have a number of second readings, and please, if you have changes or comments, let me know, I'm going to try and move through these fairly quickly, just with respect to time. So I will begin with item 10.2, Second Reading of Policy AD, the Educational Philosophy Mission of RSU-1. Is there a motion on this policy?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Alan, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Jennifer?
I had a question about, we, last time we talked about the term legally charged. There was a question, are they legally charged or not? I read that in a minute from the last meeting. I don't remember if the decision was on.
Do we have an answer to that?
There was no problem.
No, there wasn't a problem with it, I don't know, I mean, if we, we can look into it further if people have a concern, but this came from, you know, Maine School Management Board.
Do you want to wait until you get an answer to that, or do you want to go ahead with the motion?
I think we'll go ahead with the motion, because I couldn't, I was just trying to remember, if somebody could help me.
Any other questions, concerns about this policy? Any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve as written. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 10.3, Second Reading of Policy AEC, Accountability Reporting to the Public. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by David to approve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on this? Comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And that passes. Okay, item 10.4, Second Reading of Policy BBA, School Board Powers and Responsibility. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move to approve by Alan.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Jennifer. Any comments? Questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve as written, please raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 10.5, Second Reading of Policy BBAA, Board Member Authority and Responsibilities. Is there a motion on this policy?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dave.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion?
Good question, is required policy?
And the reason I say that, because it's like, most of it's been taken out of here, and what's left, if I understand correctly, is just a rewriting of main state law. And I'm wondering if it's even required that we even have this policy, rather than the sake of just having a policy. It seems like in the last policy, a lot of it's spelled out, this seems to be obsolete.
Or redundant.
Or redundant, yeah. I mean, I shouldn't say obsolete, obsolete in having a separate policy for that, because it is redundant. And from what I have read, as, you know, this is really what state law is such, state
Any comments from the Policy Committee on this?
No, I think it's a matter of this making it very simple and straightforward, that individually, as we act as members of the board, we can only speak with authority as it's required. And I think this policy puts it pretty clearly to that effect.
I think this might be a case, Kyle, where it's an exist, you know, it was an existing policy that goes back to the 80s and they kind of pared it down, and maybe next time around they may eliminate it completely.
That's what I was noticing with 1900. I was losing words. I don't have problems with us keeping, I was just thinking that. Maybe we, we'll leave it for the next revision.
Okay. All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve as written. All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay, on to Paul, item 10.6, Second Reading of Policy BDE, Board Standing Committees. Is there a motion on this policy?
Move approval.
Alan moves to approve, seconded by Kyle. Any further discussion on this policy?
Like, you know, I would, in K, the official language on community members, I would just amend that to add who the appointment for is, is the superintendent or the board chair. The board chair appoint members to a standing committee, so maybe it's just the board chair that we have.
Right now, I mean, it's, it's not the board chair, but it's the, it's the chair of those three committees that belong, so Policy, Finance, and Facility, you know, the ones that, remember how we, we kind of, we advertise using, you know, the newspaper or our district website, and then, that was the chair of those committees.
The chair of those committees, because it's standing committees, so it'd be the chair of those standing committees that are, so I think, hopefully just add to K, the chair of each standing, the chair of each standing committee may appoint community members to support committees. Okay, so how about community members may be appointed to standing committees by the respective committee chair?
Yep.
I told you.
Alan, are you fine with that amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? So we have one change. There's a motion on the floor to accept the policy as written with one change, and that is item K, community members may be appointed to standing committees by the respective committee chair. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, item 10.7, Second Reading of Policy BDE-R, Standing Committee Operating Procedures. Is there a motion on this policy? Motion to approve by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? All right. Item 10.8, Second Reading of Policy BDF, Board Advisory Committees. I, oops, I got that mixed up. Is there a motion on this policy?
Move approval.
There's a motion to approve by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on this policy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Item 10.9, Second Reading of Policy CBI. Item 10.9, second reading of policy CBI, evaluation of the superintendent. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Move to approve by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 11.0, new business.
Just before we move on back, because I know we're trying to get out by.
No, I, the only thing is, and I'll just say this, for Jennifer, we, we have a policy that if we're to carry the meeting beyond eight o'clock, someone just needs to make a motion to do it. So I'm just watching the clock there, so, but we'll stay as long as it takes. Go ahead, Steve.
This isn't long. Jennifer was correct to raise that point. I forgot. I actually raised the point, this language legally charged, responsibility, and I do, I mean, the policy stands as approved, but maybe at the next meeting, Patrick, we have an explanation of what that means. Because saying we're legally charged means that if we fail in that obligation, we're liable.
You're all voted.
We're liable for being heavily educated. Is there case law on that, where districts have been sued because of failure to educate? Just, you've got other things to do. I know there are more important, but.
That would be a good one to know.
Yep. Hold it.
Item 11.1, overnight field trip request for BRCTC Skills USA competition. A motion to approve by Steve, seconded by Bill. I just have a question on this. There are five attending adults. Do we know who these adults are? Are they all staff or is it staff and parents?
I don't know the answer to that. My assumption is that it's, I think it's, I want to say it's three staff members and two volunteers and everything, but I'm not positive.
Any other questions on this? There's a motion to approve. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Item 11.2, out of state field trip request from BRCTC culinary arts program. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any questions on this one? Might sound the same, for me, it's same question. Will EBV attending this? I'm assuming she is the one adult. Okay. Any other questions on this?
Just a question. What's the check for that's funding?
I think it's Joel's principal's account.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was like.
No.
A program or something. I didn't actually know that.
No.
People were very specific with that. Some of them say like PTA and that's what I was asking.
Right.
I never.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay, item 11.3, overnight field trip request for Woolwich eighth grade class.
Move approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Jennifer. Any questions on this? Again, I know because we're approving it, it must be an overnight field trip, but when it says is this an overnight field trip, the check mark doesn't quite delineate that. It should be either a yes or a no. And do we know, are they actually staying at the Bob Brook or where are they, where is this group staying?
Yeah, it's in Halyad, Maine, where they're staying, there on that site.
Staying at the facility.
What is the facility? Is it a?
Conference center?
I don't know enough about it. I just asked them if it was, that's what they're saying. But again, I mean, you know, if it's something, you know, I came from a system that maybe overdid it on field trip requests and gave the board and gave the superintendent maybe too much information. But at the same time, you know, I mean, if, if you, in the future, if we want to, you know, modify this and, you know, if you want more information, we certainly, you know, can do that. Because I don't, I mean, I ask, most of the time why I ask is, I look through it, you know, I want to make sure we have the proper ratio of chaperones. But, and then I ask, how much is it going to cost? And, you know, if it's PTA related, I still want to know how much it's going to cost. But I don't always go into the fine detail of everything. But in the future, we can, if something that you might want to look at and see how much detail do you guys want of these scripts?
I think the points, you know, the point, the questions that you ask are all good ones, but I think it would also be nice to know whether the adults that are attending, how many are teachers, how many are parents, and also what kind of accommodations are the kids staying? Is it a hotel room? Is it a tent? Is it a tree fort? You know, this time of year, is it a igloo? Just, I'd feel more comfortable as I approve it.
Sure. Well, there are trees involved because they're going to do a bit.
Right. Okay, so we do have a motion to approve. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes.
I'm going to go beyond eight.
Okay, is there a motion to extend beyond eight o'clock?
Show move.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of going beyond eight o'clock, raise your hand. None opposed? Keep rolling. You could vote no, and it would show up. Okay, we have one additional field trip. Item 11.4, do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Lost it in my paperwork here. This is a Morse field trip with Jonah Stanton's class going to New York City. Three students, and I'm assuming Jonah would go as well.
You're welcome. Yep.
Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Steve. Any questions on this one?
Where'd the joke come from?
Just to, yeah, to be clear on this, approximately 1,500 of this is coming from Davenport Foundation. And then you see that, you know, $250, that's where the student costs come in. Then you can see that there's, they have a hotel in this case. So, yeah, again, thank you to the Davenport Foundation for supporting this. They don't typically do field trips, so to speak, educational trips, but they really found this one to be, I think, impressive, and they're going to want to report back from the students and the advising.
Thank you.
So there is a motion to approve. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? This one's during the week, too. Okay, we'll move on to item 12.0, first reading of policy KA, KA-R, and KA-E1, classroom I'm just curious, there was a lot of detail here, and this is a new policy. These kind of policies are basically in place anyway, right? This kind of protocol is being followed?
It is. You know, there's a difference, I think, between when we want to have volunteers coming to our classrooms and to our schools all the time. But, you know, this hasn't been a big problem for us in this system, but other systems it has, and we've, you know, so we looked into developing a protocol, a process to follow the policy, but it's really, you know, if you want to have someone come into the school simply to observe something, that may have to do with their own child, but it may have to do with, you know, the confidentiality of other children being around or, you know, and, you know, for example, people wanted to come in in the springtime to observe possibly a staff member, you know, for our classroom for the following year. I mean, there's a lot of different reasons. It could be outside providers coming into our schools to maybe do an assessment of a student. And so it just gives us a lot more of a formal procedure to use and limiting, you know, giving our principals some, you know, authority here about why somebody wants to come in and maybe observe, and, you know, what the purpose is and all of that. So I think it's us just trying to be proactive, and I don't see us having to refer to this policy very often, but it was something that we brought up last year, and now it's kind of coming back again, so, as a need in the future.
And Dave, where did this language derive from?
This, yeah, this, some of this language came from actually, you know, the local school system that we work, you know, closely with, kind of has this policy in place.
Any other discussion on this policy?
I'm a little bit concerned about the use of the term observation, and so because in other clients, and it describes a formal observation here, which is assigned to parent, we're usually talking about a formal observation as a professional interaction. You observe teachers in classroom, that's a formal observation. And is what parents are doing here really, I mean, is it, is it correct to characterize it as a formal observation in the sense that we often use that term? There's a term of art here, formal observation.
Maybe formal, maybe, maybe is a better word to use, but, I mean, we're trying to characterize this.
Well, they're observing.
Observing, yeah.
That's the word.
Right, exactly.
But when you use it as a term, as a term of art, you know, we expect you to formal, to do formal observations. Teacher mentors do formal observations.
Yep.
And I don't know if it's, if it confuses things to say, well, parents also do formal observations.
Would classroom visitation be more acceptable?
Visitation might be better, but a softer term and less professional.
But in item six, though, it does speak to outside providers.
For the outside providers. This covers a lot.
It does.
And outside providers could come in to do a formal observation.
Right, that's true.
And it's not, it's not to diminish what we kind of might accomplish or achieve by going in the classroom, but use that same term to capture their participation, it might give a different feeling.
Right, you're either, you're crediting them with a skill or a task that they either are not accomplishing or may not have the skills to accomplish. You're characterizing it in the same vein as what a professional would be doing, and it may not be the same.
I think we were using a formal meaning that, so to speak, discounts, and it has a formal observation that you're coming in and it's been approved by the principal, and, you know, and so, you know, the whole purpose, as you can imagine, of this policy is really to try to reduce any disruption, distraction of our students' learning. But we certainly can go back and revisit this, you know, obviously we will add policy and see if there's maybe some different wording that might be better.
Maybe just add something along, more into formal, formal visitation or formal observation.
Okay. But it comes back.
So it's not a casual visitation.
The labeling will be a little different.
Okay, what, I think you, again, you start using a term like casual.
Or just use visitation.
Yeah, visitation versus observation, would that be an acceptable distinction to make wording?
Yeah, except, except I understand Patrick's point, too. If you want to, you want to make it an authorized, you know, visitation, it's not.
Okay.
What I think the policy, what I understand the policy is that it's trying, it tends to do is to eliminate those casual drop-ins, you know, in the neighborhood, so they stop in.
Right.
John is who.
Policy's an effort to formalize and make legitimate the process of observing classroom, but we can make a distinction between parental visitation or disvisitation and observation suggesting it would be a professional process.
Well, whatever, okay, but maybe it's a parental visitation authorized by the principal.
All right.
Keeps it.
Okay.
But I think you understand.
Yep.
There's no reason for limiting the number of breakers in time that parents come in to.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, again, if somebody wants to come in and volunteer, and they're volunteering by reading the kids, or they're, you know, making photocopies or helping out, you know, we would never, you know, we don't typically limit that. But if somebody wants to come in and specifically observe something that's going on, you know, it's really, you know, because, you know, there are times when, again, it goes back to that disruptive, distracting, and, you know, we tried to come up with a timeframe that maybe was reasonable to get a flavor for what's going on, but not be there, you know, an entire school day. So that's, that's kind of rational.
We have a lot of policy.
No, we don't. No, no. So, I mean, it's something that we've talked about before. It's something, though, that, you know, we've, you know, been in touch with our principals. It doesn't happen very often. It's just something that, you know, it'd be nice to have something so that if the principal was feeling like there's kind of a situation that might be, you know, coming up, that they can, you know, try to be, have something and be proactive with it. So it hasn't been a problem.
Is it a possibility with the orbiting here now, parents couldn't do that more than once a month, even if the teacher and the principal would allow it? Is that necessary in that? Or is it? Maybe not. Maybe sometimes they still, they want to have discretion to allow that.
Yeah.
This policy doesn't give discretion, make that choice. I suppose they can bring in the volunteers under that rule.
Right, yeah.
I guess that would cover.
Again, it doesn't happen very often, and we were trying to focus on specifically an observation versus someone coming in to volunteer.
I guess they wanted to come in more than one time, I guess they'd follow, volunteer.
Again, in no way are we trying to, I admit it's a good point, I'll look at that, but in no way are we trying to discourage volunteers from coming in into our schools.
I just don't want that to be the, what makes me feel like this policy is intended.
Any other discussion on this policy? All right, we'll make some changes and we'll be voting on this at the next meeting. Next item, 13.0, first reading of policy KA, community use of school facilities. Any discussion, comments on this? I'm just glad you added that line about waving, the superintendent's ability to wave at these. Answer this question.
Sort of clarifying use of macro products to make it more restrictive than the previous policy suggested.
Any other discussion on this policy? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Seeing none? Last chance. Come on up. It does, just for recording purposes. Why not? That's right. Step up.
No, I just want, do I have to state my name?
No. No.
I just want to thank Patrick for his very gracious comments about the working relationship that we now have between the association and administration through Patrick Banual. And it has been an honor to continue with the work that we do as we do the work. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, item 15.0. Set the next meeting dates and locations. Currently, we are scheduled for March 24th at Phippsburg. Any issues with the date? So we will plan on the 24th at Phippsburg at 6:00 PM. And those who can attend the meeting, the finance committee on Monday, I would encourage you to be there. And if you can't, certainly understand. Is there, we'll move on to 16.0. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Dave. Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All is in favor of the motion to adjourn? This meeting is adjourned.